Ladies and gentlemen, if you could just give us another couple of minutes, they're trying to get some live streaming to work over here. Thank you.
Buenas tardes a todos. Para la audiencia pública de hoy se prestarán los servicios de interpretación del inglés al español y el español al inglés. Para ustedes que desean participar, por favor de venir a verme si necesitan pedir equipo prestado. Estare acá contra la pared. Gracias.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for your patience. My name is Bill Moy and I'm with the Star Group and I'll be your facilitator tonight. And you're here for the public hearing meeting for the Sunport Boulevard Extension and the Woodward Expansion or Road Improvements. And it's an environmental assessment, so it's a very formal hearing tonight. And so if anybody wants to speak, I'll tell you now, you have to sign up back there to be able to come up here and speak. So it's not urgent, but whenever, in about forty minutes, we're going to have you speak. So we have presenters with us tonight. And Elias Archileta, a professional engineer and he's Technical Services Director for Burnley County. Got Peter Hinkley, he's a professional engineer also and consultant project manager for AECom. And then John Toshek, Environmental Consultant with Eco Spear, I mean Eco Spear. Then, hello, thank you. You got the button? So go to the next one. Our agenda for tonight is basically from six to six, whatever it is now, forty. Is an open house where you had an opportunity hopefully to look at the posters in the back to kind of describe the project. At six thirty, it was supposed to be, there was a welcome and introduction. And so then there were, we want to have opening remarks, ground rules, formal presentation, and then what are the next steps? And that'll pretty much conclude anything that looks like a presentation from the county and the contractors. After that, we start the formal comment period. Individual public statements are limited to five minutes each. And there'll be a system of telling you, you've got thirty seconds left and watch out, there's a train coming or something and you've got to get off the stage. And then we will conclude the hearing when everyone who has signed up to speak has spoken. Fair enough? So our ground rules for tonight. Let me go to ground rules real quick. It's the ground rules for tonight, this is a formal presentation. It's a formal presentation and a public hearing and the process is different than a regular public meeting. There's no Q and A session. Anything that looks like a Q and A session will happen after we conclude the meeting. And if you can get someone to answer questions for you, that's up to you guys. If you'd please have your cellphones on silent or vibrate. And if you need to take a call or make a call, would you do, take it outside and not in this room, please? We'd also have a ground rule about respect the speaker and the listener. This is critical because I believe everybody in this room, including the presenters, have something of value to say. Listen to learn, you know, give them your full attention with whoever's speaking. And then make your formal comments, sign up to speak. So making those comments, it says this about twenty-five times, we've got to get that done. All comments and statements will be recorded by a court reporter and she's over here. And the court reporter requires you to say your name clearly and give your address. That's it. That's pretty easy, right? Okay, so now at this moment, I'd like to go back to opening remarks and introduce Rodrigo Ikewald with this county.
Good evening, I'm Rodrigo Ikewald from Burnley County, the project engineer. I would like to introduce Commissioner Casada to say a few opening words, please.
Commissioner?
Thank you so much. Good evening. Thank you all for coming to learn more about this important project. I hope you know that this project has been thirty years in the making. And so I brought a quick summary so you could kind of understand the whole process and how we've come to this point today. Back in nineteen eighty-four, the project began as a recommendation from the South Valley community to facilitate economic development and to provide better access to the airport. So when they were talking about facilitate economic development, they are talking about different types of economic development other than what historically has happened, not only in the South Valley, but in the Mountain View area. So access, in order for that to change and to change what kind of corporations and what kind of stuff comes into these neighborhoods, that depends on access. And so they've, for many years, as you well know, have been trying to change the access so we could change what types of industries and what kind of jobs that we're able to provide for this community. And then an environmental report in nineteen ninety-one recommended only the eastern part of the project to be completed and the western part to be treated as a separate project. And then around nineteen ninety-five, the eastern portion serving the airport is built. And then in two thousand and eight, Burnley County agreed to build the western portion of the project. Since then, Burnley County has been studying, analyzing, meeting with the community, and finding the money to build the western part of this project. Now, in twenty eighteen, today, we are presenting to you our findings of the most recent environmental assessment. We hope that you will listen, obtain a deeper understanding of what this project is really all about and what the potential it has for this community and all of Burnley County. But mostly, most importantly, the idea presented over thirty years ago to facilitate economic development and to provide better access, not only to the airport, but different types of development still holds true today. So thank you all for coming tonight and I hope we all learn and I hope that we're all able to compromise if we can't agree. We need more compromise in this country. So now is a good day to start that. Thank you.
Hello, I'd like to acknowledge Diane Dolan, she's here from Councilor Benton's office. So with that, we'll get started with the presentation.
Okay, I'd like to introduce Elias Archileta again. He's the individual who's going to speak about the first half of this program.
Thank you, Bill. Can you hear me? Okay. Good evening. Tonight, we'd like to start with letting you know where you can review the environmental assessment document. The document's available at county and city community centers, at the Burnley County Public Works Headquarters down on Broadway. You can also review copies at the South Valley Library and you can attain electronic copies on our website, which is www.burnco.gov/sunport. So tonight, our presentation is going to be broken into four areas to cover. We're going to go over the project development process on how we got here, a brief history of the public involvement efforts that we've had to date. And then we'll review the alternatives that were considered for the environmental assessment as well as the revisions to the EA that have happened since the previous, in over the past two or three years, as well as the major updates and findings that occurred in the EA that we're publishing now. And then from that point, we'll cover where we go from here after tonight's meeting. So the project development process that we're following today is dictated by the New Mexico Department of Transportation's Location Studies Procedures Manual. This manual guides the steps that we need to go through to ensure that we meet all the requirements of the National Environmental Policy Act, otherwise known as NEPA. So this process starts with the governments involved determining the scope and need for the project. And this occurs at the programming level with the, here in the Albuquerque metro area, occurs at the Metropolitan Planning Organization, which is otherwise known as Mr. COG. And at that point, they'll identify the funding that's going to be involved, as well as the work that we're going to evaluate. From that point, once we have the funding identified, we'll go into the alignment study process, which will evaluate all feasible alternatives for what we're looking for, as well as compare it against the no-build, which is us doing nothing and moving on. From that point, we move into the environmental assessment, state, and preliminary design, which is the phase we're in now. Once we receive an environmental clearance, we can move on to final design, right-of-way acquisition, and finally, construction. So to go into a little more detail about the environmental process that we're in right now, the process began back about ten or so years ago on this project when we went to public scoping. And at that point, we took the ideas that came out of the program, I mean, and went to the public to inform not only the residents, but also any stakeholders, businesses in the area, as well as other agencies that are impacted by our construction. And then we took, we explained what we were looking to do, the purpose of the project, what we want to get out of it. And we solicited comments about where we think we should go. And from there, we took those comments, applied it to the alternatives that we've developed, and compared that to the conditions that exist today and in the future to see how our improvements would help. And that helped to guide and select the preferred alternative that we move forward. So all of that was prepared, is prepared and put into an environmental document and that's, we publish it and that's what we're doing today with the public hearing to get your formal comments. Once we're done here tonight and once the comment period ends and our comment period will go through July thirty-first, we'll compile all the comments from tonight, determine if there's any other mitigation or evaluation that needs to occur, prepare our final document and submit it to Federal Highways for them to give us a final determination. If that final determination comes back that there's no significant impact, we can proceed to design. If we do not receive a finding, no significant impact, Federal Highways can recommend us going to an environmental assessment and at that point, the county will determine where we go from here. So to date, like I said, the project actually began in June of two thousand and ten was the first public meeting that we had. And since that date, we've conducted six public meetings and another four neighborhood meetings, which includes tonight's public hearing. The meetings in two thousand and fifteen resulted in revisions to the environmental document at that time, which required us to combine the Woodward portions into our project. And that's what's taken the two years that you've seen since two thousand and fifteen, and actually, three years till tonight, for us to incorporate those changes and resubmit our environmental assessment. So from here, I'm going to turn it over to Pete Hinkley, who is going to, who's our engineering consultant and we'll discuss about, discuss our alternatives evaluated.
Good evening. So I'm going to start out with a description of alternatives. We actually looked at a number of alternatives over the course of the past few years of studies. As Elias said, we actually began the project some time ago and have gone through an alignment analysis, an alignment study that set up a few different alternatives. We have ruled out the other alternatives and carried forward what we call the build alternative to describe tonight. The previous alternatives that we ruled out were other alignments south of the Woodward Road location. Those alternatives effectively did not work as well. They were not acceptable, they did not have adequate roadway geometry, they were circuitous, they had poor clearances over the railroads and over the Amafka Channel. They didn't work as well from the overview perspective. They didn't connect as well and provide connectivity to the west. So we eliminated those alternatives and really don't discuss those anymore, nor do we analyze those in the environmental document because they don't meet the purpose and need and really were infeasible. I will describe now the build alternative that we have proposed here tonight and what we have illustrated in the boards in the back and some images on these slides. So the build alternative basically does provide connectivity to the west between Second Street, Broadway, and I-25. We connect those three locations, we provide a signalized intersection actually at each end of the project. We span over the South Divergent Channel, we span over the Edmund Street location. We don't relocate any businesses. We feel like this alternative was clearly the best alternative to move forward with. I have a pointer here, I'm just going to kind of describe the project from the west end to the east. So we start over here at Second Street and we improve Second Street for channelization of the intersection. We intend to signalize the intersection of Second Street and we'll channelize it and that requires a few hundred feet of construction on Second Street as well. Then we proceed over the railroad. We actually do cross over the railroad's three mainline tracks. Those tracks will remain, will continue with an at-grade intersection over the railroad. The intersection will be improved in order to provide gates and a safe crossing at this location. We then cross over William Street, the San Jose Drain, and intersect with Broadway. From Broadway East, then we connect in with the Sunport Boulevard Extension Project, the original project. On Broadway itself, we have to widen Broadway to accommodate channelization and improvement to the intersection. The intersection is currently signalized and will continue to be signalized, but the signals will have to be relocated for the wider intersection we're going to build. We provide an at-grade intersection on Sunport Boulevard, right here at the Arno Street location for a connection to existing Woodward to remain. In other words, this section of Woodward Road will remain in place and connect to Edmund Street in order to provide access to the properties along those locations and to the two remediation contractors who are doing the groundwater cleanup in those areas. We then extend and cross over the South Divergent Channel. We also cross over Edmund Street and then intersect with I-25. Our project includes widening of the southbound ramps, so both the southbound off-ramp and the southbound on-ramp get an additional lane. So to be a little more specific about the build alternative, it's basically a four-lane urban arterial for Sunport Boulevard, excuse me, and a three-lane urban collector roadway for Woodward Road. We do see traffic volumes considerably different between Woodward and Sunport. Sunport is predicted to carry something on the order of magnitude of eleven thousand vehicles a day in the future for our design year, whereas Woodward Road is predicted to carry about seven thousand vehicles per day. So with the seven thousand, a three-lane section is adequate and a four-lane section is planned for Sunport Boulevard with a greater traffic volume. Both roadways will have bike lanes in both directions and sidewalks in both directions. This is a change from what we described previously. When we were here for our public hearing in the past, in two thousand and fifteen, at that point in time, we had stopped the sidewalks at the Arno Street intersection. We've decided to continue them all the way up to I-25. So that's a relatively minor change, but it provides greater multimodal connectivity and access. We improved the intersections at the ends of the project, Second Street and at I-25, we added signals to those intersections and then we reconstruct the Broadway intersection as well. And as I already mentioned, we widened southbound lanes. And we do have to relocate utilities as part of the project. We know the P and M transmission lines are just west of I-25 and that's obviously going to be a big cost and a big part of the project. So we're going to start working with P and M in the design phase and think that's already probably begun. And another issue with the project, we'll be able to use one percent for public art. The county has a program in place and this applies to the funds that the county contributes towards the project, which is about twenty-five percent of the project cost. And one percent is dedicated for aesthetic design and public art. So this project has an opportunity to incorporate those kind of features into the project. This is a typical section of Sunport Boulevard itself. This illustrates the roadway as if it were on an embankment section or a retaining wall section. Let me back up. Sorry. Got a little carried away, okay. Let's use the right pointer. What we have is two lanes in each direction separated by an eighteen-foot median. We have an eighteen-foot divided median. The median would be used with a six-foot divider and twelve-foot left-turn lanes at the intersections. So at the Broadway intersection, at the Arno intersection, and at I-25, the median would come into play with left turns provided. We also have a concrete wall barrier on the outside separating the roadway from the pedestrian and bicycle areas. Outside of the wall barrier, we have either a multi-use trail or we have a combined bike lane and a sidewalk. That's going to be determined during the final design process as to what that configuration looks like. This roadway cross-section illustrates the roadway on the bridge, on the overpass bridge over I-25. The bridge will stay in place, it's about a hundred and ten feet wide and it will not be changed dramatically, but the deck and the configuration of the roadway on the deck will be changed. So what this represents, we have the two lanes in each direction. We also have a left-turn lane in each direction. This is different from what we had previously and that the original designs we were doing over three years ago had a double left-turn lane in each direction. We felt like at that time that was appropriate because we had forecasts for higher traffic volumes. The traffic volumes that we're seeing now are going to be less than those previously predicted. And I'll get into that in a little more detail in a minute. Then we have the bike, left bike lanes on either side, sidewalk on either side. So we provide for multimodal transportation all the way between Second Street and I-25. This last roadway cross-section is Woodward Road. Woodward has a single lane in each direction and in the median area, we actually have a continuous left-turn lane. There's over twenty-five driveways along Woodward between Second Street and Broadway. In order to accommodate left turning into those driveways, we put in the left-turn lane. Along with that, we provide bike lanes and sidewalks in both directions. And as I mentioned earlier, the three-lane section looks like it's adequate to carry the traffic volumes for the twenty-year design horizon. We designed for twenty forty traffic. One thing that's necessary as part of the environmental process is we compare the build alternative against the no-build alternative. The no-build alternative is set up as a baseline comparison. So the baseline, in this case, the no-build alternative consists of no construction of this project. Basically, we're not building the project. That means that this project as it stands today is not going to get done. Other projects and other configurations might get done. Woodward Road, for example, Woodward Road is a city street and the city may have other plans for it beyond this project. There are none that we know of. There would be no roadway connection therefore between Second and Woodward Broadway and I-25. There would be no bike lanes, no other sidewalks or improvements. Again, those could be done potentially if another project was set up and programmed, but without this project, they won't happen as part of this. And future traffic growth, future traffic would have to be accommodated with all the existing roadways. So Second Street, Broadway, Gibson, Rio Bravo, and Woodward would have to carry whatever increases in traffic volume are forecast for the future. So to initiate the environmental process, we have to define, after a needs analysis, we define the purpose and need of the project. Mr. Casada actually described quite a bit of the purpose and need for the project, but to put it into our transportation terms, we look at transportation system connectivity. And we want to provide that connectivity with this. It's basically was planning that was originally started in the late nineteen eighties and early nineteen nineties. And we want to fulfill the intent of that planning and provide that closure of the gap where a roadway doesn't currently exist, but would really fill out the transportation system. We therefore would provide improved access between Second Street, Broadway, I-25. This would have the benefit of congestion relief, and I'll describe that with another slide also. It would certainly improve pedestrian and bicycle facilities and those are a part of the need for the project because in the existing condition, there really are no bicycle and pedestrian facilities in the corridor. And it also would have the benefit of providing emergency vehicle access. One thing that we've done that's been a big part of these updates and revisions that we've done with this environmental assessment is looked at the traffic volume forecasts. We work with the mid-region council of governments to identify the traffic forecast for the future. We're looking at twenty forty as our design year. Through the course of this project, we ran into issues where the traffic volume forecast was shown to be very high. We went back with COG and worked with them and they worked with U and M and had recently received new data from U and M showing forecasts for the future for population and employment to actually be much flatter growth. So we adjusted our traffic volumes accordingly, went with this lesser growth and therefore, we have different configurations at some of our intersections. The roadways themselves, Sunport was four-lane previously and continues to be four-lane. And Woodward Road, at one point in time, we were showing an ultimate four-lane section for that, but we no longer believe that that's necessary, so we're showing the three-lane section that I proposed. And then one issue that's always been part of, or one result that's always been part of this alternative and this environmental assessment and the ones we did previously, is a benefit to the area relative to traffic shifts. With the introduction of Sunport Boulevard into the mix, the roadways north of the project area, in other words, Broadway north of Sunport and Second Street north of Woodward would experience significantly less traffic in the future. We look at about forty percent or so less traffic on Broadway north of the project area with the Sunport Boulevard in place versus no Sunport or no build. We see a benefit on Gibson as well with about twenty-one percent of the traffic, reduction of twenty-one percent of the traffic in the future. So what happens is Sunport then becomes a benefit in that it pulls traffic away from that area north where traffic would be currently using Gibson and they use Sunport instead. So that area is really adjacent to the residential areas and the community and the community will see a direct benefit from that. I'm going to turn this over to John Toshik now to discuss the environmental aspects.
Good evening, everybody. Again, I'm John Toshik. I'm with Eco Sphere Environmental Services. And our role was to prepare the environmental assessment, to consolidate and update the past studies. And to add a little bit to what Elias said about NEPA, this is a process that is intended to provide information to help make appropriate decisions. NEPA doesn't necessarily NEPA doesn't necessarily guarantee a project without impacts, but rather, it provides information for better decisions. NEPA really focuses on key issues. Although we conducted natural and cultural resource studies and other environmental studies as part of the EA, I'm just going to focus on the key issues. So air quality has been an issue that's been, that's come up throughout the process many times. People are concerned in part about many of the industrial land uses that have been given air permits in the South Valley and the impacts that may occur from those. Those really aren't part of this project. When we started the project, the region, the county, was designated as a limited maintenance area for carbon monoxide under the Clean Air Act. Under those requirements, we did modeling for carbon monoxide impacts as required with EPA models. The results were reviewed by the Federal Highway Administration, and the conclusion was that the project itself really has negligible impacts. In 2016, the county was designated as attainment for all pollutants covered under the Clean Air Act, including carbon monoxide, so modeling was no longer required. But nevertheless, we redid the analysis, the microscale hotspot, it's called hotspot, modeling with the revised traffic forecasts. And again, the impacts that we found were really negligible. They are on the order, right adjacent to the intersections in question, of about .2 parts per million, while the standard is 35 parts per million. And the urban area has never been designated as non-attainment for any of the other pollutants covered in the Clean Air Act, and consequently, there have never been transportation control measures or modeling required. So those really aren't impacts, and the same goes for mobile source toxic emissions. Most of these pollutants are addressed by emission controls on manufacture of vehicles. Those have been getting better, and they're projected to get better into the future, and that's really the reason why Albuquerque is attainment and why there are no impacts related to transportation for this project. Noise is another area where we did analysis. We did measurements in the project area, and we did modeling with future traffic volumes with the proposed roadway geometry. And what we found is that there are four sites, four individual sites, in the project area along Woodward and at the intersection of Broadway that exceed the standards in the future, and all but one of these exceed the standard presently. This is a noisy area. It has rail noise, it has air noise, it has truck and auto traffic noise. It's an industrial area. Because the sites are isolated, individual residents with driveway access onto the streets like Woodward and Broadway, there really is no way to create noise mitigation through barriers. And so noise mitigation is not recommended, is not part of this project. Land use has also been an issue. People are concerned that the project will induce growth in the area, that there'll be dirty industry that moves in. The way the project is situated, it is actually in an industrial corridor. It lies between the San Jose, the residential part of the San Jose neighborhood, and the residential part of the Mountain View neighborhood. And basically, it is an industrial corridor. In the past, I think as the commissioner mentioned, there has been planning, notably the Southwest Area Plan, that encouraged transportation facility and economic development and growth in this area. The area is also zoned for industrial development, and it has existing development. The county, in an effort to mitigate any potential land use impacts because the county has listened to concerns in the past, is proposing to create a design overlay zone for the area for the Mountain View, San Jose neighborhoods that would be intended to, you know, promote better development, design guidelines, and so on, to control development in this area in the future. And so people will have an opportunity to participate in developing that planning process, which is, as I understand it, just starting out. And I guess this slide sort of speaks for itself. Even in the no-build situation, this, the status quo is an industrial situation. The area is industrial as it presently exists. Socioeconomic impacts and environmental justice are also very important topics. Both these neighborhoods, the San Jose and the Mountain View area, have high percentages of low-income and minority populations. There has been several health impact studies that have shown that this area has a large number of industrial land uses that may produce contamination. These HIAs indicate that there have been health impacts in the area. And our environmental assessment, although we didn't verify that information, our environmental assessment attempted to look at whether this project would have disproportionate and adverse impacts on environmental justice populations in the area. I think I already talked about land use. The project is in an industrial corridor. It complies with the zoning. There are no direct takes of businesses or residences. It doesn't split the community. I think Pete Hinckley talked a little bit about the traffic increases. That's been a concern, that there will be traffic, additional traffic in the neighborhood. The way the project will function is it will draw traffic onto the interstate before it goes north toward the Gibson interchange and through the San Jose neighborhood. So there will actually be less traffic to the north of the project area, although Broadway and Second Street south of the project will see more traffic, but this is largely an industrial area. I already talked about air quality and noise. There would be benefits in terms of improving the multimodal network, the bike and trail facilities, and also some economic impacts with a project that will cost somewhere more than $20 million. There will be significant jobs and wages and economic output in the economy. The model that we used shows somewhere in the range of $126 to $210 million in total output in terms of multiplier in the economy. Hazardous materials have been an issue right from the beginning. When the Sunport interchange was constructed in 1997, it was not extended to the west because of the South Valley Superfund site and some of the other contaminated properties. Since that time, there has been significant improvement in terms of remediation and cleanup of these sites, and so our project construction will not impact any of the cleanup efforts and will be coordinated with the agencies and property owners that are involved in remediation. And finally, I wanted to say something about indirect and cumulative effects. Indirect effects for this project primarily involve induced growth. It's likely that the area will experience some growth. I mean, in part because the hazardous materials issues have been cleaned up, in part because of the access that will be provided by the project, and also in part because of the existing zoning and the proximity to the airport and the interstate. People expect this area to grow. I already mentioned the county is making efforts to control the growth through the design overlay zone and to basically make sure that concerns about dirty industry and other impacts are not realized. There'll also be likely economic benefits in terms of jobs and wages and so forth that I already mentioned. Cumulative impacts include other activities in the region that have effects that accumulate with this project. I mean, these include transportation projects like the Rio Bravo interchange, which cumulatively should make the transportation system work better. The east-west trails provided by this project will have a benefit with the north-south trails that are planned or already exist in the project area, and will make the system more complete. There are several other development proposals. The airport has a master plan, the Santalina, Mesa del Sol. It's likely that these projects will compete for development with development in this Sunport area, and it's hard to know how the urban pattern will change, but those are other cumulative effects. Topics like air quality, where no impacts were identified in the EA, are not considered to have cumulative impacts. Topics like noise, which do have some adverse impacts, would have cumulative impacts with the project. The same goes for the beneficial impacts of things like improving the multimodal system. There would be cumulative beneficial impacts. So with that, that's pretty much concludes the summary of the findings of, the key findings of the environmental assessment. Part of the NEPA process is public input. We want to hear your concerns and issues and any information you have. That's why we're here tonight, and I think Elias is going to talk a little bit more about the next steps. Thank you.
Thank you, John. So where we go from here is we'll move into the public comment period of tonight's hearing, and from there, we'll collect all the public comments that we receive tonight, as well as comments that we will continue to receive, or you have eligible, or you're able to submit to us through July 31st. So once the comment period ends, we'll combine, collect all those comments. We'll prepare our input synopsis and determine if there's additional mitigation that needs to occur other than what's already been noted in the EA. We'll finalize our environmental document and submit it to Federal Highways for their evaluation and determination. Once we receive their final determination, if we receive a finding of no significant impact, we'll go, we'll continue on through design. If we do not receive a Fonzie, then we will consider our options. But if we're able to move on to, to design, we'll continue on with it, with design right away acquisition. And concurrent to that process, our Burnleyo County's Planning and Development Services Department will be beginning their, the Sunport Commish Design Overlay. We'll also be running concurrent with the county's public art program process, which will run independently of design, but will be included in the corridor if we're able to move forward. And once design is completed, which we're, if we continue on the schedule that we're anticipating, we expect to be in construction in early 2020. And so from here, I'm going to turn this back over to Bill, who will begin our public comment portion of the hearing.
Thank you, Elias. So before we start the public comments, I'd just, I'd like to go over this one slide with you. The verbal comments and statements are tonight, and they're for the record. We also have that via the, you can, I don't know if you had comment forms in the back, but they were back in the back, and if you picked one up and you want to send something in, then it's available to you either by mail or fax, and the fax numbers and the address are on the list. Or if you are going to be able to handwrite it tonight, they'll take it at the end of the meeting. Oh, you can email your information also to the three emails that are up here, and that is in your packet, so I'm not going to read all three emails. And then the comments are all due by July 21st, which is not too far from now. 21st? 30. Oh, the 31st, I'm sorry. Missed read that. So if you want to review the environmental assessment document, you can go to www.burnco.gov/sunport, and so it's light reading. You can read it any night, you know? Anyway, from that, we have the ground rules for this, part of the program. So all comments, statements will be formally recorded by the court reporter over here. Please speak slowly and clearly. Identify your name and address for the record. Speak into the microphone. I'll have a microphone approximately where that camera is. And then time period for the comments, five minutes and no longer. Longer statements can be submitted in writing. There are going to be a notification so that when you have 30 seconds left, I think Brian over here will hold up a yellow sheet of paper. That's your signal you have 30 seconds left, and he's going to hold up a red one when your time is up. So on that note, our first speaker is Nora.
Nora Garcia. Excuse me if I say your name wrong, some of these are kind of hard to read, but...
My name is Nora Garcia. I live at 236 Sunny Slope Street, southwest Albuquerque, New Mexico, 87105. The Mountain View Neighborhood Association concludes that the Sunport Extension and Woodward Road Project was implemented for the sole purpose of increasing the number of industrial businesses in our northern border area, allowing additional truck traffic congestion, hazardous pollution, and more dangerous chemical industries to move in, further promotion of businesses such as hot mix and recycle asphalt plants from locating their businesses across from Mountain View Elementary School, concrete demolition companies whose dust you can see for miles, and transloading facilities containing chemical hazards, who are allowed to have train tankers to sit on the tracks endangering the community. This situation can lead to possible releases of hazardous chemicals and even explosions due to truck and trap, and truck, train, or other types of serious industrial accidents. You know for a fact that a safe distance for residences from potential chemical accidents, explosions, and releases of hazardous chemicals is at least five miles. Yet you are willing to risk our lives by expanding roadways to accommodate more continually polluting businesses. The Sunport-Woodward Project will mean an increase of large truck fumes from the traffic running on a 24-hour schedule will further pollute the air for local residences and subject them to even more respiratory diseases and chronic and fatal illnesses such as asthma and cancer. You talk about how design overlay standards are intended to have a positive influence on development patterns and enhance the character of the industrial area and adjacent communities. However, what we see is the Sunport Extension is not a... is not about enhancing the character of our communities. Rather, it is about assuring financial gains for the few in the county at the expense of the health and well-being of the many low-income minority residents living in San Jose and the community of Mountain View. Since the concerns of Mountain View and San Jose have not been thoroughly addressed by Burnaleo County, the Mountain View Neighborhood Association is asking for the Federal Highway Administration to give the Sunport Extension a no-bill alternative or make the decision for an environmental impact study to be completed to thoroughly and truthfully examine all the negative impacts the Sunport Extension will have on communities of Mountain View and San Jose for many decades. Thank you.
Thank you, Nora. Thank you, Nora. The next speaker is Stephen Anaya, I mean Abeta. Stephen Abeta. Stephen Abeta? Is this mic fixed now? You're going to talk to them? Okay.
Hello, everyone. My name is Stephen Abeta. Can you hear me better now? Okay. Hello, everyone. My name is Stephen Abeta. I reside at twenty-four-nineteen Williams Street. I'm where the Sunport Extension is going to be. Past performance does not guarantee future results. This is what we're always told before making an investment. However, past performance is the best indicator to predict future results. It is a true fact. San Jose and Mountain View are listed as environmental justice neighborhoods. It started way back in the nineteen hundreds with AT&amp;SF, all the way to GE. We were poisoned by many companies. GE even used to dispose of hazardous materials by spraying it on the roads to prevent dust control. This led to our history and legacy of the first superfund site in the state of New Mexico. In addition, we have the Swartzman landfill in our neighborhood. We were also poisoned again by AT&amp;SF, and other superfund site was added to our neighborhood. It is sad to report to all of you today the current state of affairs in the neighborhoods of San Jose and Mountain View. We are saturated with many polluting industries and many more that are planning to move or increase their pollution throughput. Many residents, some here in this room, have found countless battles to prevent new polluting companies from locating in our neighborhoods. I have personally worked with Juan Reynosa, John Block, Eric Jantsch, Nora Garcia, Lotto Silva, Kitty Richards, Loretta Noronho, Richard Moore, Angela West, Marla Painter, Mark Rudd, Deanna Baca, Olivia Greathouse, my wife Esther, and many more great people that care about us. We even requested the help from New Mexico Environmental Law Center, Southwest Organizing Project, Health Impact Partners out of California. We even asked the help of our elected officials, Tim Keller, Andres Romero, Isaac Benton, Kiki Saavedra, to work towards a solution to mitigate the environmental impacts we're enduring in the neighborhoods of San Jose and Mountain View. I know the environmental statement, it states that "We have existing zoning and land use mechanisms to review and record and regulate development and overlay standards to protect us." Oh gee whiz. Take a look around the room in the audience and look at all the people who have fought hard to prevent polluting companies from locating in our neighborhoods. And they'll say to you, "These protections do not work." We know where we live and the environmental conditions in our neighborhood. So when we hear only good industrial companies will locate in the area, our past performance and record, you'll realize more polluting companies are coming, and we can't stop them. Our history shows we have the state's first superfund site and a reclamation facility with injection and remediation and test wells. This is our history. You can't take away our history. We also have a graveyard to the north of the extension. I say these well sites are of historical significance, and the county cannot take away our history from us, even if it's a bad history. I'm familiar with the traffic of issues affecting all of us, especially those that live in Mountain View. Many of us in this room think we're going to get a faster way home. We're not. In the environmental assessment, it says that traffic's going to increase north, uh, going to increase more south of Woodward Boulevard. It's going to increase more on Broadway, more traffic on Broadway, more traffic on Second. But guess what? The bureaucrats who are trying to dictate this project on us are going to have less traffic going downtown. Me, I personally ride my bicycle to work every day. And the Sunport Extension says, "We're going to make bike trails for the bikers to get to work safely." I don't know if you've ever driven a bike next to a semi traveling at forty-five miles an hour. It's not fun. It's not safe. And no one in their right mind is going to walk their baby carriage up the Sunport Extension. Even though our history tells us there are many environmental issues in the area and the Sunport Extension is planned, they did no laboratory work. Somebody just came out, drove around, did an assessment by visual assessment, looked at some aerial photographs, and looked at some web results. We need an environmental impact statement to be performed. We cannot allow this. And if you think it's going to help you, think again.
Thank you, Steve. Is Esther the next one? Esther Abeta?
My name is Esther Abeta. My address is twenty-four-nineteen Williams Southeast. I would like to thank the New Mexico Environmental Highway Administration, Lisa Now, Civil Rights Program Management Manager, for meeting with me in the spring of two thousand twelve, listening to the concerns I wrote to the Federal Highway External Civil Rights Office in two thousand twelve on the Sunport Extension adverse impacts the Sunport Extension will have on the families of San Jose, for investigating how Burnaleo County Public Works and URS failed to take responsibility in two thousand eleven and two thousand twelve to follow the NEPA process and for failing not to do a thing on Woodward and Second Street. John Don Martinez and Great Heitman for forcing Burnaleo County Public Works and URS to address Woodward and Second Street. I would like to state the purpose, the proposed, of the purpose Sunport Extension project reasons for proposing and needs for the Sunport Extension to build on the reason of transportation civil, transportation system connective, improve access and circulation, balance traffic volumes and congestion relief. Multiple transportation and emergency vehicle access are not enough reason to justify to change the characteristics and quality life of the residents of San Jose for many decades. This road project is only going to increase more truck traffic. In the EA, URS states, "Heavy truck is more likely to use the proposed new interchange." Instead, local, instead of local streets of Broadway and Gibson. More likely is not a guarantee that heavy trackers, heavy trucks will use the proposed road extension. For a community that every day and night is exposed to idling trains and noise from train, train activity, train activity noise that exceeds the noise the city ordinance threshold decibels. Particulate matter from two idling trains in the community of San Jose are compared to a freeway in Los Angeles. Volatilic organic compound smells of chloro benzene and sulfors of the families of San Jose are exposed from the polluting industries that surround the community of San Jose. For community members of San Jose and Mountain View, every day, every hour, life is precious. Making the time to care for things that matter, volunteering their time and effort to protect the safety, health, well-being of their families, neighbors, and environment in their community. The analysis conducted in the EA indicates the inflammation of the Sunport Extension would not result in significant adverse impact is not true. In fact, the Sunport Extension will significantly impact the community of San Jose and Mountain View by bringing more polluting industries to apply for air permits. The, this, there's a term called cumulative impacts, which means to us that all of the pollution, noise, and traffic from all sources add up together is too much for a community to bear. We are at the level right now, and the Sunport Extension would definitely push us past the livable thresholds. There was an environmental assessment was done on the Sunport Extension in which the person doing the assessing, looking around the area, research historical records, and did, did interviews, and this is what is done in the standard situation. However, the location of Sunport Extension is not located in your typical highway project location. The extension is located in a superfund site within a landfill buffer zone that may be leaking underground storage tanks and unknown contaminations in the right-of-way. A bill, a bit, an air, environment assessment is significant for a typical site. This site is not located in the area called for environment. This area is located for an area that an impact, environment impact statement, because it's located in known polluted area and the risks are greater. They can be potential undiscovered issues that can only be addressed after the excavation starts. We also need an environmental impact statement to be completed first because San Jose is an environmental justice neighborhood with two superfund sites. More important because of the project with severe impacts in the families of San Jose and Mountain View by bringing in more polluting industry to the area, the San Jose and Mountain View overlay has not been approved by, has not been approved by the county, and URS has has not included the overlay as a way to decrease the environmental impact. URS also says, "We have existing zoning land use mechanisms to deal with unwanted polluting companies." It is mentioned that the mechanisms rarely work. If you read the EA, Regro Digos did not submit new forms at the time of the writing of the EA. Interviews with the Swartzman Landfills were not received. And also, the EA is not, is lacking any trustworthy conclusion that is not a typical highway. So we need environmental impact study. So in Mountain View and San Jose, we have too many promises broken. We have lost trust in the bureaucracy downtown and trying to impose on us. We need outside organization to conduct scientific laboratory studies on the pollution of land and population. Try and look at the impacts new companies located in the area will have. The noise cumulative impact the Sunport Extension will have on San Jose and Mountain View. This project is not about Roger Paul building his legacy. It's about the environmental legacy of San Jose and Mountain View we are right now dealing with. The money from the project should be diverted to Mountain View to add sidewalks, flood controls, and repave the streets. And I have a community member here from San Jose that mentioned that she would like to know who from San Jose and Mountain View who would be adversely impacted by this road project present tonight to please stand.
Thank you, Esther. Victor? Victor Laranaga? Want to be here or you want to be here?
My name is Victor Laranaga. And I have a business at thirty-twenty-four Broadway, Southeast, a small business. We, we employ, you know, ten to fifteen employees, and most of them are from the South Valley. And I think this would be a good, a good project to go with, you know? I, I, I know that we, we, we are there every day, you know? And we see a lot of, a lot of people just going up Woodward, you know, and, and throwing trash, you know? As a matter of fact, we stop almost on a daily basis. We stop somebody and says, "There's not a dump up there, you know? You, you can't go and dump over there, you know?" So we're doing a little bit to, to help the community, and, and we think that this would be a great asset to, 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 to the whole community there, you know? I hope that we can go along with that and, and continue to help the South Valley and, and its people, you know, with more jobs and better industry and things like that. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Roberto Roibal.
My name is Roberto Roibal. I live at twenty-two-thirty-three Dom Felipe Road, Southwest, in Pariuto Community in South Valley. I'm president of the Pariuto Village Association and vice president of the South Valley Coalition of Neighborhood Associations. I'm here today to talk in support of my friends and communities in the East San Jose and Mountain View communities and their neighborhood associations. As stated, there's a whole lot of issues that we see going on with this project. It's nice that the assessment mentions environmental justice, but what it's going to do is it's going to take us further away from environmental justice. I also believe that it's just, that this extension is just going to bring more businesses, more industry down here, more polluting industries. And we've got too much of that here in East San Jose, in Mountain View, and in the South Valley entirely. That is against environmental justice. It's affecting people of color more and more, and we oppose it. Well, I'm also very concerned that this, once they do this extension, that it's going to dump all this traffic down into Broadway and, and Woodward and Second Street. And right now, living in the South Valley, I, I work downtown. And I, I drive down Second Street every day to work and back home. And it's just getting, the traffic is getting worse and worse. I don't think this road is going to alleviate that traffic. I think it's going to increase more traffic by trucks, more of these industrial businesses. It's going to increase the pollution, the, the smells of the, the petrochemical companies there. It's atrocious at times just driving down the road, and I oppose that. I'm also concerned that this will just be one step to extending a road west across the river and meeting the west side. And I've been very active in fighting the Santalina development on the west side, and I think this will just be another excuse to help them build a road to build that development, which impacts us in the South Valley. And I oppose that. And I here to stand with my brothers and sisters in East San Jose and some, and Mountain View because they were with us opposing Santalina because that was going to negatively impact the South Valley. And I just also am curious why we know that Mayor Keller in the city of Albuquerque has pulled the city's support of the, of the extension, of the Sunport Extension. So why is the county still trying to push this? Just want to know that question real simple. Thank you very much.
Next is Juan Reynosa.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me? My name's Juan Reynosa with Southwest Organizing Project, two-eleven Tenth Street, Southwest, eight-seven-one-oh-two. First, want to start my comments off around the initial site assessment that was done by URS. In particular, it's limited hazardous materials assessment. The ISA, or the Initial Site Assessment, was done in order to evaluate environmental concerns associated with the project. And I would say limited is the perfect word for this assessment. As Steve mentioned earlier, that assessment was done by surveys with companies in the area, searching databases, and doing drive-by surveys of polluted sites. Yet no actual testing of the soil or water was done in the project area. In their own words, "No exploratory soil borings, soil or groundwater sampling, or lab analysis of soil, waters, air, or other media performed." And thus, the initial site assessment acknowledges that, again in their own words, "Currently unrecognized contamination may exist on the site, and the level of such contamination may vary, vary across the site." Yet, if you read the EA, there are three contaminated sites that are noted within the right-of-way of the project. It's already been noted that the South Valley Super It's already been noted that the South Valley superfund site, which is right at Woodward, is still in the process of being cleaned up, the Swartzman landfill, as well as Duke City fueling. I would say that it's already in a ridiculous premise to want to build a highway extension through an ongoing site cleanup. I don't think anything should be built there until the full remediation of that project has been completed. It's also noted that with Swartzman landfill, there are no designated boundaries for this, and they may still not know what is held in there yet. For both of these sites, including Duke City fueling, there were no hazardous tests actually done. I just think this is a very poor way of providing information to the community around hazardous materials, especially since this has been one of the biggest areas of concern that the community has continuously brought up and continues to bring up tonight. It seems to be done in a way that purposely assumes there aren't any hazardous materials into the project area. And within that, we're told that by URS that they did not find any indicators, and they should not assume liability for information that proves otherwise. Their interpretation should not be used as legal opinion, and it's used for solely the use of Bernaleo County. Seems to me that they're making sure to relieve themselves of any liability regarding their limited hazardous materials assessment, because there's a large likelihood that if actual soil testing was actually performed, there'd be a slew of hazardous materials found. Thus, this environmental assessment does not do its job of assessing environmental concerns associated with the project if they're not providing real information on hazardous materials contained within the project area. I would also ask the question of what other Albuquerque road project plans to build through a superfund site and an old landfill site? I think that's a lot of extra baggage that this project is holding that raises a lot of red flags that the Federal Highway Authority, who would eventually approve this project, should take note of. I'm assuming there's a lot of extra liabilities involved with that, and once they get to having to clean up these sites, the cost would increase dramatically. Moving on, in regards to the section on environmental justice, I find it interesting that none, absolutely none of the eleven potential impacts found on Table 46 were shown to have any potential impact for the project. I completely disagree with the assessment done earlier that there will be no impacts on this already overburdened community. Eleven thousand cars coming in right next to your neighborhood, and you think there's going to be no air pollution or noise impacts on your community? Just think about what that would do to your neighborhood, and then think about the impacts there. This report even acknowledges that the project may facilitate growth in the polluting industry, and that's exactly what we've been saying, and the community's been saying all along, that that's exactly what this road will bring. Yet, they claim, the county claims design overlay standards will help mitigate this, but as Esther and others mentioned before, that is not an actual document or a piece of policy yet. It is a carrot hanging in front of people to make it seem like what we're saying isn't going to happen, won't happen. But I will say that until that is actually a valid document, that's a lie, and they shouldn't be saying that as a claim to ensure that what the community has been saying all along won't happen. That's not good enough. Economic growth doesn't mean better public health, so you can't uphold that as better quality of life for a community. So, once again, Southwest Organizing Project stands with the community against this project, and it should not be approved. Thank you.
Was going to be, oh, okay, we'll go to the next person.
Good evening. My name is Alfred Bolden. I live at 3215 Second Street Southwest, 87105. I'm a third-generation resident of this area. My family has lived continuously in this area for 115 years. I am a proponent of this project. I only see positive support that will occur in the area with this extension. It will create job creation, and it will bring clean industry. As a landowner of land surrounding this, we have implemented restrictive covenants that prohibit noxious uses for that. This is an economic development area for the county that the entire Bernaleo County can be proud of and for the future. It has been blighted in the future, and it's time for this area to shine. So, I am a supporter of this.
Next is Andres Romero, state representative.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Andres Romero. I live at 4503 Valley Park Drive. So, since I was elected to the legislature to serve in part the communities of Mountain View and San Jose, all we've heard at the legislature is that we're short on money for various reasons, and community projects in particular. When I've gone out to your communities, I've asked, what projects do you prioritize for your area and for your communities so that we can make the best of the money that is available to us? Not once did I hear this project being a priority for these communities. So, I also don't understand the benefit to the communities. That has not been made clear to me at all. One of the stated benefits is congestion relief. However, as been mentioned, there's going to be increased truck traffic throughout the project, which can only indicate the use of this road by heavy industry. We have a few projects, one that is ongoing, the I-25 Rio Bravo Interchange, that is to relieve the congestion that us in the South Valley and in these communities feel. The Federal Highway Administration and New Mexico Department of Transportation have also done an I-25, South I-25 corridor study, and a part of that study is restructuring and rebuilding I-25 and Gibson. That would also go a long way in reducing congestion and traffic in our communities. It's also a much more viable project to explore than this Woodward Sunport extension. So, I don't know any of the businesses, and again, this has been stated, but I don't know of any businesses other than heavy industry that would want to locate near a site or sites that are being remediated, remediated, other than heavy industry. So, in this, I stand with a lot of the community members from Mountain View and San Jose in opposing this project, and hope that we can get moving on some of the other priorities like the South I-25, make that more of a priority than this project.
My name is Maria Globus. I'm at 531 Shirk Lane Southwest, Albuquerque, 87105. I'm nervous. This is kind of intimidating. But I really want to speak to you all, gentlemen, because and and all the government people here in the audience, because I feel like Mountain View and San Jose are are kind of like stepchildren, or maybe it's all the residential areas. I don't know. I doubt it, but it feels like you're really indifferent to what our felt experience is here. And I don't understand why you're bringing in Second Street to this whole thing. I can understand Broadway, if you must. I mean, I guess the money's burning some hole in somebody's pocket, but I don't understand the Second Street thing. There's probably some kind of project in the future that we don't know about. But Second Street is our street. You've taken all kinds of stuff from us. You pollute the air, you've zoned everything, so all this heavy-duty commercial businesses can come in, tremendous pollution, tremendous danger to us in case of accident. You don't need to do this. You don't need to do this.
I think the next name is Paul M. Chavez.
My name is Paul Chavez, and I live in 2209 Alp Street Southeast. And I think this project should have been done thirty years ago. And the reasons are because, one of the reasons is noise. The off-ramp on I-25 to Gibson has been a thorn in our side for thirty years from the trucks using their jack brakes early in the morning, late at night. And not only that, we heard about the environmental or the hazardous point. In the in the in the eighties, there was a gas truck that overturned right there on Broadway and Gibson going east. It dumped the gas all the way down Broadway, it went into the sewer next to East San Jose, and they, the fire department, they evacuated the school. The fire department poured water into that drain for twenty-four hours. Another thing, a tar truck turned over that same intersection. Two gravel trucks turned over going west and south on Broadway in those years. Now, it hasn't happened again, but it's real possible. I count the trucks, because I live right in the right in the corner, the northwest corner of the freeway in Gibson. There's twenty to thirty gas trucks that come off that freeway and go back up every And you're talking about the fumes and the environmental to the school, to the kids. The studies have been taken here that the traffic is going to increase in the next ten years quite a bit. Is it all going to go come down Gibson and down Broadway? It can't. We need this extension, no matter what everybody else says. It's progress, people, get over it.
Hello. My name is Daniel Chavez, and I live on 924 Ross Avenue Southeast. So, I ride my bike every day, and I always find my commute from south, going south on Broadway, and then from there going to CNN every day. And in the community, people don't realize that when you're biking, that it's just as much of a hazard as being in a car, because there's less safety to us. And I think the project would be a benefit because they would build sidewalks. I am one, I for one am not, for riding on the bike lanes in the road, because I've been hit three times. One of, once was by a cop, and it really doesn't matter where you're at on the road, you have to watch yourself regardless. So, I think sidewalks are good, definitely, for all of us, especially for the children in that area, because there's no sidewalks there right now. And even like, just for transportation from the airport to and from there would help. The congestion would go down, and also, emergency services would be able to access that neighborhood from a different position in the city versus where we stand now without that that passover. And not only that, it would propose growth for businesses, engineers, and electrical people, construction people, they would all benefit from this. But coming from that, I think an environmental impact report is definitely required because there's people that live here, and we matter, and we're not going to go away just because this is built. And if you're going to build this, have some respect for the neighbors and people that live here, because this is the air I breathe every day, this is the air I wake up to, this is the air I go to sleep in. So, I would like to have some respect as far as environmental-wise, and, you know, the businesses that thrive in our neighborhood, I'm not too proud of them either, I'm not too proud of what's been hidden from us and what is hidden still from us. So, definitely, care for the environment is required. And I think it's all okay when people come and build and make progress on our land and pollute our air, but I know that if we were to go to their side of town, they would fight it, because they see a side that we don't until they're threatened and they have to fight for it. So, I'm for it, but at the same time, I think there's respect due to the community.
Next speaker is Laro Silva.
Hi, my name is Rachel Raboni. I am a resident of Mountain View. I am also on the board and have worked with HIAs and placematters in the past. I don't think that this has been, should be approved as it is. I agree that progress, that we need to move forward with progress, but we also have to go and look at what has been done and what has not been addressed, which is air quality and the traffic, the safety, and a poor planning on Second Street. You showed a picture, a slide of Second and Woodward, and what that six-foot fence contains inside it is debris and a lot of fugitive dust, and that goes towards the river and contaminates the water, plus all the neighbors. And yes, we do have problems with air quality, and it is not addressed. EPA does not cover all of this. I live down the road on Williams. We have a problem with all the trucks already coming down from there, and fugitive dust from all the businesses, and a lot of contamination on the ground, and the air and the noise. And this is what we have to look forward to with this. The cleanup, the sites that they did clean up, it's great. It's a great thing that that happened, but we don't want to contaminate it again. We want something nice. I think that Second Street was a disaster as far as the planning across from the Quik Creek and so on, because that's a beautiful area for the Bosque, but it was. Creek, and so on, because that's a beautiful area for the Bosque, but it was all, we have porta-pots there now, and we have all this debris and buildup from all the, we have what we have right behind my house, which is on Williams and Rio Abajo, down the road, south from here. And it's going to be the same thing, you call air quality, no one addresses it. No one does anything, EPA was slashed as far as the state goes, and monies, the school, we have Mountain View here, we have children, that we have to consider their health, and we have a lot of cancer, and we do have a lot of problems with breathing. I'm just kind of shooting from the hip here, but this has been going on for years, over 15 years, and we got the rail runner, we got the airplanes, we got the train, we got the traffic, all the diesels, and yet, we have one of the best evac systems for sewage, and no one is enforced to connect to it. And, I don't know what they're doing with all the gray water, but we need to address sidewalks, yes, bike lanes, of course, but we also need to have, take into consideration the air quality, that these kids are going to be, we have lead in the soil, we have other issues, we have too many issues to bring more oil and different things, because they just changed the standards instead of addressing it. And yes, we did have several spills. We had a spill from the place up on Broadway, and yet, no trees are enforced, none of the codes are enforced, and we have over 100 places here with at least 75 citations on my, this little area here. So how do we expect to enforce everything on Woodward, and the studies, and the air quality, and so forth and so on? We have too many contaminants already. I don't agree with it, with this, until it's further studied, or some of the sites and codes are enforced. Thank you.
My name is Marisol Archuleta. I live at 3615 Big Cottonwood Drive Southwest, 87105. I live in the area that is just behind Second Street and Rio Bravo, an area that wasn't really included in this environmental assessment, though I definitely know that we will be experiencing the impacts of this road that we do not want. We live in an area where during rush hour traffic, Second Street gets backed up a lot going south, and people like to cut off onto the side, onto the dirt, where there is no sidewalk, and then they cut through my neighborhood, and they drive very fast, so that they can get onto Rio Bravo and skip out through all the traffic. Now, this environmental assessment says that the traffic now is going to increase even more going south on Second Street. In the morning times, there are bus stops at the entrance of my neighborhood, and at the exit of my neighborhood, and I have seen children almost get run over three times from people going, rushing through my neighborhood to try to cut through. And I see this road as only impacting this, and making my community more unsafe. I know, I've heard over and over that things are zoned this way, environmental justice won't be impacted. I also see in these slides, it feels like the writing is kind of on the wall. So in the next steps, you're saying you're going to collect all of our public comments, go through this process of reading them, and then you're going to begin construction. So I feel like the decision's already been made here. I know that I personally have spent hundreds of hours researching, giving public comment, begging my elected officials to represent me. Andres Romero is one of the only ones who's come to speak on the behalf of the community, and if you can recall in his comments, what he has said is that, from speaking to community members, there are a lot of problems in our community, but this is not one of the things that we want our resources spent on. And I really hope that our elected officials can hear that from us, and I really wish that people who are hired to do these environmental assessments would actually speak to the people who live in the areas, take a little bit of time to dig a little bit deeper, not just use data, not just do drive-bys, but actually take, do some actual testing to verify all of these things. We deal with a significant amount of health problems. Our children's schools are located right across the street from industry. We are constantly battling things against our own elected officials that are supposed to be protecting us. I sat here and watched, you know, I watch our elected officials scroll on their phones as we give public comment. I know that we've had to fight to have interpreters available for meetings, so that our community members could be here. There's a reason that they call this neighborhood an environmental justice neighborhood. And to hear the contractors say that none of this will impact us is infuriating, and it doesn't make me have any, give him any credibility. And I don't know how much of my tax money we're spent to pay him, but I feel very uneasy allowing that type of report to represent what's really happening in my community. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is John Hunter. I live at 221 Rossmore, Southwest, 87105, right in the area where this lady just got through speaking. We are impacted with a lot of traffic, from Second Street, in the afternoon, traffic is backed up, sometimes clear to Woodward, across the track on Second Street. And, my biggest concern, though, is why would you build a road for the west side when it only goes one block? One block, then it goes south to Rio Bravo and to Rossmore, which is going to make Rossmore a thoroughfare. It's heavy traffic now, and the kids playing out there, if they lose control of their scooter or their bicycle, they get run over by speeders. These people come across that ditch on Rossmore about 60 miles an hour, some of them do. These things, it's going to impact Rossmore and that Rossmore addition tremendously, unless they build a flyover over Giant. So without a bridge, this is a useless project.
Thank you. My name is Mark Rudd, I live at 506 Valley High, Southwest. I'm a retired teacher at CNM, TVI. The other day, I found myself on I-25 coming south from Paseo del Norte. It was rush hour, 5 o'clock. I thought, well, this is going to be a piece of cake, because they just built four new lane, they just finished a complete remodel, four lanes coming south with new access ramps. The traffic was just as bad last week as it was before the remodel. It's almost a law of urban planning, that the more roads you build, the worse the traffic becomes. Look at LA, look at Phoenix, Denver, we don't want to become like them, right? Plus, one other thing, even bigger than that. Every single person in this room knows that global warming is a terrible problem. It's a crisis. The West is burning right now. We have to stop doing what we're doing, which means burning fossil fuel. In all good conscience, the only moral thing to do here is to stop road improvements and build mass transit, especially for an airport. It's ridiculous to keep exacerbating the crisis of global warming. It's a moral problem, even the Pope says it. Really, I mean, your jobs will be just as good, you'll have just as good jobs in a renewable energy economy with mass transit. No more road improvements, stop global warming. We've got to do it.
We have a trio here, Angela, Loretta, and Bianca. Maybe it's not a trio. Do you want to be up here?
Okay, I'm Angela V. Hill, and I'm representing Martinez Town, Santa Barbara, and Victory Hills Neighborhood, and I'm here to support the residents of South San Jose. I know Esther, we've worked with Esther for many years, and she's told me about her health problems throughout the years, and it breaks my heart. She's my friend, and I watch her suffer.
My name is Loretta Narango Lopez, and I'm the president of Santa Barbara Martinez Town Neighborhood Association, and I'm here to support the community of San Jose and Mountain View. I agree with the previous speaker, if we keep building roads, we'll keep getting more traffic. That's common sense. So we need to stop building them, and really start planning in our communities, and looking at the impacts that are already existing for these communities with the polluting industry. Thank you.
Art De La Cruz?
Good evening, everyone. It's my pleasure to be here. I reside at 1800 Atlanta Circle, Southwest. I have lived there my entire life. I currently reside at the same location, actually next door, my wife and I built a house with my two adult children and my wife. I'm 62 years, well, I'm going to be 62 years old this December. I've never lived anywhere else, except in the South Valley. And I wholeheartedly support this project, I supported it from the first day that I got on the county commission. And the reason that I supported it is really, I think, something that's being left out. Environmental justice is absolutely important, and I am glad to share that, and others have shared this evening, that much has been done to mitigate the pollution that occurred historically. What's being left out of this equation, and one of the reasons that I ran for the county commission, was because of economic justice. Economic justice. Growing up as a little boy in the South Valley, in the 1960s, I saw a time where Isleta Boulevard was an active, vibrant, commercial, living community, space. When the malls came in, the same thing that hurt downtown hurt the South Valley. We had a place where you could buy a suit, once upon a time. We had a place where you could, where you could buy a pair of shoes or a book, we had that. It went away. And in the time that I was growing up, and one of the things that I ran as a platform on, was that we would bring places for people to shop, where people could eat, where they would have good spaces where they could walk, and we worked tirelessly to make that happen. And somebody talked about earlier, somebody said, "Past performance indicates future performance." You're absolutely right. And if you look back in the short history of about eight years, what do you have now? You don't have any new polluters in the community. Anything that is polluting that you consider a polluter was here. Some of those polluters were here before you were here. But we do have US Foods, we do have Admiral Beverage. I helped negotiate Wagner, which is broken ground now, on the corner of Interstate 25 and Rio Bravo. And what has that meant? What has La Sustancia's meant on Rio Bravo and Coors? It has meant shopping opportunities, so you don't have to drive as far, so you don't have to drive that car and pollute the environment so much. That's what it's meant. Now let me share with you something that I ask my friends, my neighbors that do not support this project, let me have you, please consider this. Now, it's, I'm going to be a little cynical now, because I've heard cynicism for a long time. I know that probably what I say will fall on deaf ears, but it doesn't matter, I have a responsibility to say it anyway. What I will share with you is that you need to be careful over what are called unintended consequences. Even if you had the ability to shut that project down, if you ignore the fact that the scientists and engineers have said it's not going to be negative an impact, I will tell you about unintended consequences. Right now, those properties, the vast majority of them, there's about 1,000 acres that are undeveloped. If you look at those properties, they are already zoned industrial. That is an entitlement, that is something that they have. And if you don't allow that project to move forward, what will happen is that you're going to get, at some point in time, it will happen, you will have new companies that come in there, you will have new industries that come in there, and they're very likely to be exactly the ones that you do not want to be there. Because that is an entitlement, they have a right to be there, they will be there. But if you open up that corridor, and if you look at the county's planning, and if you consider what the county development and planning department in the past has done, they are after good, clean, industrial development. That is what they're after. That is what they want. That is what we need for jobs. That is exactly what we need. So I will tell you that opening up that corridor will open up opportunity for good, clean, smart, not only retail opportunities, but also for good, clean industrial. Or consider what you may have the other way, by trying to shut it down. Thank you.
Okay, it appears that everybody that signed up has been able to speak. I want to draw this meeting to a close and tell you thank you. Thank you for being here, thank you for your comments, I think a lot of people had a lot of good things to say, and I believe our panel will review those and do what's right. Good night.